Pledge of all committing order at five to six.
Euline?
Here.
Taylor?
Here.
Colette?
Here.
Anderson?
Here.
Dunn? Ed? Fillmore?
Here.
Cook?
Here.
All right, guys, want to stand for the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a motion for approval agenda.
A motion to approve the agenda for August 11th, 2021.
Anderson seconds.
And so this is a special meeting, we don't even have to talk about anything further, is that correct?
Yeah.
Awesome, okay. Public comment. I'm sorry, do you still read the vote?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
Go ahead. Do I just do the As and As?
Judges, all on the paper?
All in paper?
Aye.
Thank you.
Post? All right, now public comment. In the future for meetings, I would like someone to clock when someone goes up to the podium to speak for their three minutes. So I'm just putting that out there now, if anyone would like to do that. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Pray for the life. Awesome, Molly, thank you. All right, moving on to committee reports. All right, so we got the exciting news that another DDA member, thank you Darrell Anderson, has completed the Main Street program. That makes four for us to move forward. We need a minimum of five, so we are well on our way. We are also exploring the details and facets of potential investments for this particular program. Darrell raises some good questions, so during our meeting on the 26th, we will talk a little bit more in depth about that. Fair enough?
Yep.
Okay. All right, moving on to Stockbridge sidewalk sales. Exciting news on sidewalk sales. So yesterday at the Ice Cream Social for the new superintendent, a lot of people, great show, and then I was able to network some more community members to let them know that these Stockbridge downtown businesses are having sidewalk sales. Last Saturday, when the design committee went in, was downtown, I had the opportunity to speak to Keith, who owns a Stockbridge diner. He has a barbecue pit smoker that he's going to put out on the sidewalk, so he's all excited about running the restaurant the same day with the smoker. He's going to have his brothers come help. And so we also want to talk to Medina's. So it's the last one I have personally to speak to, see if they want to do a taco bar or tamale's or something fun out on the sidewalks that day. So pray for no rain. Other than that, people are going to pull their racks out, Robin from the, is it Simply You's going to have Brendan's Lemonade Machine, there's a couple of vendors that are going to be out on the sidewalk there. And then the rest of the idea is to just bring your goods outside. And I know Judy, you've done that last year towards the end of the summer, it seemed very popular, people like, looks busy, things are going on. So 10:00 AM, 2:00 PM, we'll have our banner down there or placed strategically somewhere to highlight that that event's going on. And then, as you may or may not know, yes, Dan?
What's the date?
August 28th. It's on a Saturday.
August what?
28th. And then All Wheels of Stravaganza, it's the same day, so not a DDA business, but it is a big event in Stockbridge that's from 12 to 5:00. So we're hoping that that 12 to 5:00 traffic's going to come down earlier before the All Wheels to celebrate the sidewalk sales for the businesses. So planned strategically for the success. Yes?
For our LED sign when I advertise, do you have wording for me, or do I just make up my own?
You can make up your own, but I think just simply Stockbridge Sidewalk Sales. I know it's long, so you figure out, you know, what looks good, Judy, but really appreciate you putting on that marquee. In addition to Judy's marquee, it is going in the big one that the Lance Chapman from the Lions Club coordinates. He's going to, he does a really good job of like, like right now, the Ice Cream Social will come down and ours will go up. So he's going to put it there. Another great source of advertisement is the Trailhead Sign, the new one that the Village, so we're going to put it in there. And we are just a little over two weeks away. So things are going great. The goal this year was to keep it as simple, but involve as many people and sell and help themselves with products as possible.
Are we putting a banner up across the street? I think they've done it for Ferguson's.
The banner we have that we invested in, the one that was, we had at the last meeting, I don't think is big enough to hang up across the street. Debbie, you've got maybe a little bit more experience on size of banner for that.
Mine's a, I would say it's like this, and then I want to say it's about 30 feet long.
Yeah.
It's a heavy duty banner.
So the one we have is just the not the right banner. That'll be a great goal for in the future, but this was only like a $250 investment. And so we'll put it though either on, was it you that said, put it down by the Stockbridge sign coming into town, past CESA, then there's a little sign?
Yeah, the guys.
With the posts?
Yep, the guys can do that, the guys can put that, yeah.
Yeah.
Can do something.
And then social media advertising, and then the other thing is getting the businesses to share. So John, you do a fantastic job of advertising on Facebook, especially with that new video.
That was cute.
So once we, it's very cute, once we get that, another marketing piece, share, have the businesses share it, that's when it really, people still get some good traffic out of seeing that that's going on. Any other question about sidewalk sales? All right, cool.
How many, oh, one more, sorry. How many businesses are planned to participate?
I don't have a count. I can tell you like who's been communicated and who's kind of giving feedback. So it's Simply You, Plain Market, and then going down the line, Cravings, Home Town Pharmacy, Lavachus was included in that Messenger. Who does she give her name? Go ahead. And then Positive Chiropractic, Adiska for sure, she's doing the Kona Ice, then Stockbridge Diner, Country Pedals, definitely they're all included. Crafting Lovely, she was at the chamber meeting with me one day, so she knows. So Stockbridge Bowling Alley, Teresa there knows. McDonald's been invited, so I don't, everyone's been invited, I just don't know who's, at this point, we don't know who's identified as actually doing something. So hopefully everybody's encouraged, especially if, you know, there's power in numbers. So hopefully people will see things going on and want to be involved in that. Okay.
Anything down Fillmore Street?
Yep, that's, we're hoping that Medina's is going to participate, and thank you, because I was thinking about you and Dylan Glass today, as I was turning the corner and I saw their sign out. I mean, I communicated to them, but I want to make sure they know about it, so.
Who else?
Is there a tattoo shop on?
It's being sold, so no one is in there currently. Who else is with you there, John?
The print shop.
Oh, Marcy.
The print shop.
Absolutely, Marcy knows. She said she was going to participate as well.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
They have a variety.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. All right, guys. Okay, next is Design Committee Report. So I'll kind of tee this up, Melissa, you can talk a little bit about it too, and then Judy chime in. So the whole Design Committee Report, guys, is generated from the beautification product, project that we're trying to do downtown. Pretty eye opening for the three of us, looking at condition of the sidewalks and what really needs to happen, the lamps, it's kind of, you know, we all live here, but do you really look hard at this town until you really look hard? So we talked about the thing that Annette had asked us to focus on, which was the define the scope of work, so that's step one. So us coming to, and do you want to step in now, Melissa, talk about the bullet points, you remember what they were?
Yeah, so we're going to put together a, like preliminary draft request for proposal, and that'll include like our overarching objective, and then the scope of work that'll have the different design elements broken out. So anything that would fall under like concrete work, signage. Landscaping. Landscaping. And then define what kinds of improvements we'd like to see, but not dictate what exactly the improvements would be, so that we can get like a design engineering firm to come in and propose, or several to come in and propose some suggestions for that. And so then the first step would be getting a contractor on board to do all the design work, work with the committee to approve all the designs. Once the designs are approved within budget, they would then hire out the different pieces, so they would work like a concrete contractor, and they can sub out the design work, and then work with us on how we get very, what pieces we'd self implement, and then what pieces they would end up implementing themselves or something else. So I'm going to put together that draft, and I should have it ready by our next meeting in a couple of weeks.
Awesome. And then Annette had met with us on Zoom to talk about structuring this case, a great idea that Melissa just mentioned. And then from there, we can decide if there are any, because we wanted to try to facilitate either a college involvement or adopt town, but we're not project specific enough yet to see if those options or opportunities exist. So is where we were trying to maybe hurry up and get it for this fall, that probably won't be possible, but at least as a way we're going, the goal would be to start things in the spring as far as if we could get our design and the everything in place. So that's, I'm sorry.
Oh, I was just saying, and it would be beneficial to get multiple bids from multiple different companies, just to see what ideas various companies have. So they would come to us with proposals saying, hey, you know, we think you should do this kind of design, it's going to cost this much for us to design that, and putting those things together. I've written these kinds of proposals before, and I've done public bidding before, so it'll be too challenging.
Awesome.
Now, we have a select committee that determines which one.
Yeah.
Which firm?
Yep. Yeah, and I don't know, so like, from my experience, at the state level, we have to set criteria ahead of the bid on how we're going to like score the proposals. So we'll have to work on getting that set up ahead of time too, so that they're all scored fairly. And then, does this, does the village have pre-established contractors scoring? Anybody know? Does the village have pre, so like, we get a proposal in, are we judging them 80% cost, 20% design, 50% cost, 30% experience, 20% design?
I don't think so.
Okay.
I don't think we have that criteria, so.
Okay.
So it would be in the purchasing policy?
Yeah, so we look at our purchasing policy, but we do, to my knowledge, we do not have anything set up that detail.
Okay.
So it makes it a little bit easier in terms of maybe the choice. We look at, maybe we'll set a few parameters.
Okay.
And then this will also encompass the lights. The two things that Annette advised, as maybe we had talked about previously, Molly, was banners in alley, and really leave in those separate, because those can be something that obviously we work on through local, and that's the banners with Bob Tracy. And then the, and the other piece is the alleyway. There's some very strong interest from the Arts Council of Stockbridge to help with the alleyway, and that's, the alley's owned by the village. So at this point, we as a DDA love having a conversation, but if the, if you guys own it and you want to work with them to authorize them to do it, we can either help facilitate it, or we can step out, we can work directly with them, but they would love to talk to you about that. I think it's going to be on their next meeting to see if that's something that, yes?
How sure are you that the village owns the walls in that alley?
Not at all, now that you're asking. Okay, now.
You are?
I'm going to, yes, then, Molly.
Last I knew, we had to get an permission from Spatterford to do all the tuck pointing and replace on the brick.
And Spatterford is the one that said, you own it. You can do it, you want with it.
Okay, I needed to ask the question.
Okay.
Good for you.
So we will continue that conversation, but Molly, you can let us know what involvement you want us to have. Obviously, there's going to be a cost, so that's, maybe that's our piece as to whether we put in the beautification project, the cost piece. Okay. Any questions right now, guys, about the follow-up on the Design Committee and the scope of work in the next step? Yes?
I would just request that you get this in place in the winter, so the design can be done in the winter, and decisions can be made then, so that work can be done starting in the spring.
Sounds great, so design, winter.
We can try to move that fast.
Yeah.
I don't think it's that huge, but I just wanted to grab people before they get busy.
Yeah. Sorry, Judy.
The only place, the only cement work I remember being done?
Yeah.
Is in front of the, our house, and he did a very nice job of that cement work.
Okay.
So I don't know if you'd have record of that.
That was contractors hired with design and build, right? You know, that did all the sidewalk replacement.
The other thing is the question of, which we looked hard at, that whole design debacle on positively chiropractic side, Country Pedals, that whole step up. So we're hoping that that could be addressed with the, whomever makes these bids, and we actually came up with some few clever ideas ourselves, and we're not even professionals in that area, so, so who knows? Maybe somebody can take it out and fix it. It's been wrong for what, 100 years? I don't know. But did something that did come up also, because I know you and I, we had all talked about that on email between, yeah, as a sore spot that, God, we felt. The other thing we saw was there are some mats sitting on a tree in front of Gerald's flooring.
For his bird food.
Okay, we think that it killed a tree, so I'm not sure who's responsible for having that conversation, but just duly, we wanted to note that we saw that, I have a picture of it, if you want to see it. Because the mats are there, the water's not going down, and the tree's half dead.
Thank you.
Welcome, moving on. All right. Progressive pump tracks, bump it, bump up. All right, guys, so we are trying to keep things rolling with pump tracks, per the experts, we don't want to lose excitement on this project, and we have had, there was a gentleman that was coming this evening, I'm worried that he didn't know how to get to the building and how to get in and where the room was.
He's been.
Dan?
Oh, Brian Adiska.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's a different one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Dan, remember the BMXer on the Zoom?
Yeah.
He's very interested in being involved. He wanted to be here. He wants to be involved in terms of helping us make choices that maybe we just don't know to make. So team pump tracks would include the board and then any community members that could help us with these details and generating money for this project. So hopefully you guys all agree that the more support and better this, this project. So we have a straw vote, we got a feel from the council, Molly's the stake, let me know if I say anything inaccurately, we've got a good feel that they would be in support of this project. Darrell, our details guy, was talking to us about the sole source bidding process, we want to make sure that that is in place and we're not violating any step of how we bid this out. So we need to revisit those details, Darrell, I know that we had a great conversation with them, you had some follow-up questions. Your information you sent on the last follow-up email used terminology I wasn't quite sure I was following. So from that conversation with Vessel Solutions and American Ramp Company, did they satisfy? Okay, so then we have to now go back and see what we need to do as far as if.
This was a communication, I didn't see, but no.
Okay, no, you saw everything. So we need to find out if we need to do more to, with that bidding process per our bid, but we're not, we're not there yet.
Yeah.
Okay. And then John Gormley and I had talked about the plan amendment process, I also spoke to Annette Knowles, our consultant, about plan amendment process, and maybe we look for the future in creating our plan amendments so that they're broader and that we have some maybe two to five-year goals, so we don't have to do so many plan amendment changes. But we'll talk more about that, do you want to interject now, Darrell?
If it's okay.
Yes.
Melissa, it sounds like you've been in the engineering department in the state of Michigan, right? So you're used to writing an RFP.
Yeah.
So you might want to consider a short RFP to help satisfy your sole source requirements for developing a pump track. And depending on the response you get from that, and she could put in there with your support of how fast you want it done, and what you want to construct it out of, and some cost benefits would, in my opinion, carry you a long ways on getting this project going, you know? And you can get your, I think you could cover that cost of preparing that and send it to your already approved budget of contractors, you know?
Okay. So the first question I have is, Melissa, this is, how big of a responsibility or what we're asking you to do, how big is this? Because I have no, I don't even know what our list stands for.
Request for proposal.
Okay.
To do the, let me make sure I'm understanding. So the issue with the pump tracks is that you can't sole source it, you have to three bid it? Is that the issue?
Well, you have to have legal justification to sole source something, you know, I mean, per our purchasing document, you know? Otherwise, we have to have bids, right? Am I saying something wrong?
No, I think it's a sole, no, sole source bid. If nobody else sells something of that product, you're allowed to buy it.
Oh, I agree with that.
Yeah.
The question is, is there other people that actually do that? So that RFP would determine that.
Right. Well, you would have to advertise it and send it out, so you would have to advertise it and then send it out to the other companies that would do that.
Well, actually, you put it in a magazine, what's the name of that magazine? That you put your RFPs in, professional contractors? We used to, as the state, we used to put it in there when you're going for an RFP.
Mentioned that segment.
Yeah, so with the state, we use, and I think municipalities can use the same system, it's called Sigma VSS, Sigma Virtual Self-Service. And so like whenever, whenever I need a contractor, I write up a request for proposal, it gets posted on that website, and then anyone who's qualified can send me a bid. And I, I'm pretty sure I've seen municipalities and school districts post on there, I just don't know how. So that's a, it's a public bidding system for projects in the state of Michigan.
That'd be a good way to go.
I can check.
It gets you a long ways down the road.
Okay.
In my opinion.
Okay.
Sigma? Yeah, S-I-G-M-A, Sigma VSS, I can send you a link to it.
Okay.
You're all above board, and I mean, there's where you put in your sole sourcing now.
Yes. Gotcha.
So if you write a, if, if we were to write a request for proposal for someone to design a pump track?
Yes.
You know, we would have to like, we'd have to put in there details about size, material, things like that. I mean, we could probably put in options and then see what we get back.
Okay.
Do you put in a cost limit, ceiling?
I don't think so.
You don't have, I don't think you have to, no.
Okay. And you've never used this before, because you're, is that correct?
No.
Okay. So we have to determine whether or not this is in need, and right now, we believe it is to be above board with the purchasing process for the Village of Stockbridge, which we enacted, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Then, do we understand what the goal is then? Melissa, can you help us with this preliminary piece?
Yeah, it shouldn't, I mean, it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be too extensive, because it looks like you've guys, you guys have already done a lot of, a lot of it.
Yeah.
Just plug it into an RFP and then bid it.
The other thing that we can ask is, the Vessel Solution, American Ramp Company gentlemen have been extremely helpful in facilitating this idea with Molly and I, starting from no knowledge of anything about pump tracks. So we can ask them if they've done this before, so maybe they can help us overcome some of these hurdles, because they've already done it. And they're the ones that said, we are, we can get you a source source bid.
If I'm not speaking out of line, haven't we kind of more or less come to a consensus of what's the design we want? Haven't we?
I think that, I know what one you like.
Yeah, I know which one I like. We want bigger, better.
I like the one, you know, I think we all decided we liked the same one.
Yeah.
So.
I can't remember specifically, actually, which.
Well, it was asphalt with a bunch of rolling hills and bangs, you know?
Yeah.
It was the only one that was that way.
The one that I asked how much it was possible?
Yep, yep.
That's the one, John, thank you.
How big was it?
About an acre.
Thank you. I thought he said a third of an acre.
Ah, I could have an acre. I could be wrong.
I thought he said the really small ones were a third of an acre.
Okay, then I'm remembering incorrectly, because I thought, wow, that's not very.
Well, that, that should help, I mean, I think, I think we decided that we like that design, you know?
But that's their design, so we can't put that design in their request for proposal, we can just say we're looking for, you know, an asphalt pump track that'll fill a space in, it's going in Veterans Park, right?
Correct.
A space up to an acre.
That's why I wanted to give a dollar amount, and they could make a design that they would do for that dollar amount.
They probably want, well.
See, I didn't know where you'd start. Do you go this way or that way?
I don't either. I guess that system will probably trigger you to give those, that information.
Do you want to give a dollar amount, the other one is?
I know.
Have them tell you?
Because you want them to bid on it. Right, so you want them to bid on it, because typically if you get three or four good contractors who are qualified to do the work, you want to grab low bid, or second to low, if you're not required to grab low bid.
Or not.
So.
Glad you. Try it, John.
But the original one that you talked to, they have the Oron thing, and they have the tournament, and will we miss, I mean, I think that's what's really important about this.
So when they, so when they send in their, their proposal for us to look at, they would add that into like an added value section, and we could score that and use that as justification for hiring them if we wanted to. Now, if we got another company who had similar add-ons, you know, we could weigh the two, well, which is more popular, you know, Monster or Red Bull, or you know? That's.
Good point.
And then, and see, you know, which company would be best suited for our purposes for this project. It sounds like if they're the only ones, they're the only ones that are going to bid on it anyways, and then.
Good chance, there you go.
We're going to go.
All right, okay, then we've done our job.
But we've done our job.
And you did your job, John.
I have a question, Judy, are you envisioning a pump track that would be, that would enable events, competitive events?
Yeah, that's, that's what it's about.
You want to get that big? You're not just thinking, this would be really fun for the kids in the community.
Oh, but that's what sold me on it.
Yeah.
When he was talking to us at.
The draw, the people.
The bowl, the, what is it, bowl?
Red Bull.
Red Bull thing, and.
They're big.
And tournaments. That's what bring people, you don't want it just for the town, do you? Don't you want to?
That's, that's where I wasn't sure what the breaking point was. Is it for our community? Or do you want to bring people here?
Bring people here.
Okay, I think it's an opportunity to do that, I wasn't.
Yeah, I don't think anybody would disagree with that. I was hoping that was part of the excitement.
Good.
Because that's part of our job, and we want to be very, community would be happy with that.
Good. Good.
All right, guys. All right. So I, I've kind of got a plan for that next step. And then, um, we have Sorry.
Did that help?
Can you help?
No, did that help?
Absolutely. Yeah. So, we're going to, we're going to do some conversation here, figure out, um, the RFP and then send the link, figure out if we need to do the bidding process.
Because I think you got most of pieces there, like Melissa said, you just need to put it all.
Yeah. Okay.
Enough.
And we'll figure out if that, if that program works for municipalities. If it doesn't, then we'll have to do a different way. We'll figure that out. And then we've got our next meeting pretty close coming up, so we'll know.
As far as how you advertise it, that Village is normal method or you can use this other one, it don't matter, as long as it goes out.
Or both.
Or both.
Whatever's requiring your purchasing policies, if anything over a certain dollar amount, you do need to have, try to get at least three, you know, you advertise it and then you get this three. And if you only get one, or you send it out to companies.
I can catch a lot of it, but I agree.
What's that?
You have to talk louder.
Yes.
I even turned my hearing in.
She was just reciting the, the policy and process. She, she nailed it. And it's everything you already know anyway, so we're good. Um, so then, guys, um, we will move on here from pump tracks. So very exciting keeping that thing going. Um, community member Brian Adiska has offered his service looking for ideas. Uh, since we wrote this agenda, something exciting, very exciting happened. Um, we, Erin Clifton is a community member, DDA member, obviously, you know, she is showing some positive chiropractic. She has been pitching a Gaga Ball to me personally for over a year. And with that, um, we finally had an opportunity to explore it. Does anybody know what a Gaga Ball is?
No.
Okay. So then, uh, your homework, our homework, is to Google it. I have a link already, guys. I'll send everything to you. G A T A. Yeah. And, um, it's, it's a game that kids play and, um, it's popular, uh, even though we don't know, we haven't heard of it. It's because we're old. Exactly. So, um, Brian Adiska, Greg and I were on vacation. Brian Adiska had, uh, reached out through CESA and then, um, uh, we as the DDA wanted to know if he could sum up for the community, um, and then sponsor it, so to speak. So the Gaga Ball came up because it's typically a three or five thousand dollar investment. It can be a, a big cost. And he's, uh, in construction and he can literally build this and donate it. So it was kind of exciting. Um, I, I, of course, with board approval and Village blessing. Um, so they're doing some background investigating. They went out to Vets Park, I think they even went today. They were looking around for, uh, they, they understand that we're hoping to put pump tracks over here, so then where, where would it go? And then she, Erin, I said, well, Erin, you've got to help us present that to the DDA and then ultimately the village. And she will be here or she will at least give us the presentation on September 26th for our next meeting. So, um, people got to decide if you like it, you want it. And this is a good use of Mr. Adiska's talent and donation.
Yeah. Meanwhile, we have to find out what it is.
And I got it all. I'll say, post this meeting, you'll, your phones will blow on. Okay. I promise you will have it.
You said next meeting, September 26th. Wouldn't it be August?
I'm sorry. Uh, yes, August. Thank you.
Twenty-sixth?
Yeah. My mistake. I've said that a couple of times. Thanks so much, Judy. So August 26th is our, uh, a regular meeting date. So, yes. So we'll have some kind of presentation and we'll find out if it's, it's good for Stockbridge and if people want to go for it. And, um, uh, got the wonderful blessing of a, uh, local person company that wants to get involved in building that for us.
That's awesome.
If, in the event that is not the right project, then I would encourage all of us to think about what else. Um, Farmer's Market structure came to my mind. It's one of the things that I see in other communities I wish that we in Stockbridge would consider putting. So something like that, something that he, they could build, that we don't have, that would bring benefit and value to this community. It can be a, anything that you guys, um, think of and then we can present it to them as opportunities if this does, does not pan out. Any questions?
I saw a really great Farmer's Market pavilion. I forget where it was. I'll remember.
You always know those, don't you? I, you always look at those, too?
I do.
I do. Dexter's got a great one.
It's a dedicated place.
Yes. It's an amazing one in Grand Rapids. Where the vendors just back up into their space. And then there's a pavilion that goes all the way back.
Okay. We continue. All right. Um, public comment?
Um, you know, Farmer's Market, I know that, uh, we do it in the, uh, we do it in the, uh, town square, but I think a dedicated area would be great. I've talked to CESA and they just have so much parking lot over there and that turnaround. We were talking about something over there that would work and they would like, we, we don't use that whole parking lot. So, that might be something we might want to think about in the future because, um, I think it would be fantastic place.
That might be a better
Covered, just like you said, you're back in, you do your thing, people can walk underneath and it's, it's awesome. And I've just got a gorgeous one over on Carrington there. It's really, really nice and very well done. Chelsea's is phenomenal. They do a lot of business, they bring a lot of people in. Have a look up.
Thank you.
That would be a good location, too. So visible.
Yes.
Is that the backside of the Ford dealership? Or where is that?
Toward the front or the back, Greg?
You know, we talked about the front because it's a much more, it's much more visible. And even if they wanted to do a trial with tents, it would, it would work. But, uh, and we talked about it a few times because I think that visibility is really your key. When, when Chelsea's was back behind the high school, it wasn't so busy. When they moved it over to the parking lot, the Black Alley, Palmer's, man, it, it cranks. And they got a lot of stuff in there. So, and I think it's a draw. I really do. Yeah. Something visible, real visible.
That field that's next to, it's across the street from the entrance to the industrial park, it's between Dollar General and the bank.
Yeah. That's old. That's
Is it, that field, is it, um,
Oh, Todd Pybus.
Is it?
No, Towne Hall.
Oh, Manel's Field. I'm sorry. Across the street by Dollar General?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, everyone owns that.
Is that in the, is that in the village? Is it in Michigan?
Yeah.
Is it? Eight hundred thousand dollars and it's yours.
I was going to say it's for sale, how much? But it's a little
Wait, that's in the village?
Because of the street.
Yes. Uh, so is, so is Rising's around the corner. They got an extent, which would diminish the place.
I thought everything on that south side of the road there was township.
No, we ran water to it.
So, Melissa, what were you thinking about, just, I mean, using that space?
I mean, that would be an awesome spot for a very large, beautiful Farmer's Market vendor use area, like multi-use vendor area.
That just gave me a thought. Because Todd Pybus, who owns this one across the street, he doesn't really want to sell it. He wants somebody to do something in the community with it. So, and he's, uh, build the suit guy. So maybe that's a great spot. It's the same idea, I just stole it and moved across the street. Thank you. But, um, that could be
Not quite as expensive?
Because you have everybody coming into town and it's immediately visible.
Yeah. And if he
Just like in Chelsea.
Yeah.
If you're driving right past it, I mean.
Okay. Some preliminary conversations.
While they go to McDonald's, they could stop in.
They could stop for some fresh
Real food.
Everything. They can get a McDonald's right at the Farmer's Market. They can grab their McDonald's because they're extremely hungry and then, oh, we want this for dinner, too.
As people have reminded us, that, I went like this, that, um, that's a very busy spot. Uh, McDonald's does a lot of business.
It's our anchor.
It's our anchor. Thank you. I knew there was a word that you used. It's one of our anchors. So, uh, putting a Farmer's Market right across the street is, you know, as equally as great as putting it on CESA's big corner.
So that would be right across the street from, like, right across that industrial drive from McDonald's?
Yes. Yes. He's got a, uh, signs as available up front, Belfast Construction, right now. It's very different. So, um, we kind of know what, knew his intention was that he wanted to do something community with it. So, um, yeah, we had that conversation. Judy, were you guys?
Yeah, I just, um, I think it's safe place would be a lot more deal. Because I might miss that spot because I don't even know which one you're talking about, but maybe not. Maybe the tents were out and everything. But I really think the corner, if he's got all the parking
Yeah.
That would be much, much nicer.
Yeah. I just don't know if, uh, CESA would be open to us building a permanent structure. So, these are
The other guy?
Uh, no, CESA.
I know, but will the other guy?
Uh, yeah, I, I have to ask. He wanted to do something for the community, so I have to believe that means that, and he's a, and he's in construction and, and he's build the suit. That might be, um, these are all follow-up conversations, you know, so I don't know exactly what people are going to think, but, yeah.
You may be able to, to create a path. I can't, I can't picture what the property lines are from there, but there may be a way to get a path from, like, the Lakeland Trail over there, too.
We talked about building a sidewalk out that way to toward McDonald's. The DDA has. And I think that's on our to-do list.
That was on phase, phase two or phase three?
I forget. But bike path, walking.
It's one of those.
Something.
Okay. All right, guys.[1550.02]